Let me call the April meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order. You'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bale, for leading the pledge.
You're welcome.
Welcome, everybody who is here and those who are watching at home, sleeping while watching at home. So, first item on the agenda is a resolution honoring our support staff. Dr. Perrott's going to read that for us.
Tonight is a resolution honoring the support staff by Anderson County Board of Education. Whereas the support staff members in Anderson County schools are an outstanding group of dedicated school employees who care deeply about the students, and whereas our support staff honorees include school secretaries, bookkeepers, attendance clerks, receptionists, SROs, teachers assistants, and nurses, whereas our teachers and administrators depend upon the support staff members to prepare learning materials, operate the office, carry out business functions of the school, tutor, counsel, advise, and guide individual students and perform a variety of other activities that result in the overall improved learning environment for students and their teachers throughout the school, and whereas our support staff is made up of individuals who have shown a commitment to our schools and to our students they serve, and whereas our support staff brings into the schools a pleasant personality, common sense, calm demeanor, peace, and safety. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Anderson County Board of Education hereby establishes April 17th, 2023, as Support Staff Appreciation Day. And be it further resolved, the Board expresses appreciation and thanks to all the support staff in our school system and encourage each school to recognize and join in the celebration of these individuals on the day and the role they play for the success of our school system. Be it further resolved, the Board endorses the use of the Toy Story theme to celebrate the Support Staff Appreciation Day. The students will have fun with this theme as it brings back childhood memories for the honorees and the students, adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected Board of Education of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 13th day of April 2023.
Make a motion we approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion and second. Approve the resolution. Any discussion? Of course, not all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. And that is done. I can't wait to see the pictures of the Toy Story. All right. We have guests tonight with ASAP presentation.
Good evening, members of the Board. Before I pass the mic over to Matthew, I just wanted to take a quick moment to introduce myself. My name is Jared Ormsby, and I'm a prevention coordinator with ASAP of Anderson. We are drug misuse prevention nonprofit here in Clinton, and we serve both Clinton and Oak Ridge and the entire Anderson County residents. Through our grants, which are given to us by the state, we are able to host a youth coalition where we recruit members, students of both Oak Ridge High School and Anderson County High School and Clinton High School to help us in our drug prevention efforts. And each year, we are given the opportunity to take the students to DC and Nashville to speak with our elected officials about some of the things that we're seeing in our communities and advocate for sound legislation regarding substance misuse. And so, you're not here to hear me, so I'll pass the mic over to Matthew. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Palicchio, and I'm an ambassador for ASAP of Anderson. First and foremost, thank you all for having us here tonight. While in Nashville, we met with Representative Reagan and Lieutenant Governor McNally to discuss vaping and the usage of Delta-8. Some of the items we addressed were students getting caught with vapes, students learning to get around detection devices, and what we can do to help with these situations. I was asked by Representative Reagan what were some solutions that could help reduce the usage of vapes in school. I feel that education on the dangers of vaping is a great place to start. At the beginning of the school year, when kids are going through orientation, it would be great to have a session on vaping and not only the rules behind it, but the dangers to their bodies as a result. I feel like reminders throughout the school year would also be great. Posture, poster, sorry, poster and literature posted throughout the school would be a helpful reminder as well. Lieutenant Governor McNally asked what he could do to help with our campaign to educate on the dangers of vaping, and had many other questions for me. We discussed how students are getting access to vapes under the age of 21. One of the major ways kids are buying, selling vapes are through a social media program called Snapchat. Retailers are also contributing to the sale of vapes to minors by not checking IDs thoroughly. Unfortunately, some students are even getting them through their parents. I would like to encourage the school board to continue to support us here at ASAP of Anderson in leading the way to educate our area youth and families on the dangers of vaping and Delta-8. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the things with ASAP is they really and truly are a great partnership with us, and one of the things they do is they provide an app for all of our schools. And if a student has a concern, if they have a bullying concern, if there's a safety concern, well, they do that app, and then it comes and it'll come to the principal, it'll come to me, and it is a really good way to where the student can feel secure that they can do it anonymously, and we've really had some things that would potentially be big deals that they, a student stepped up and did that. So, I hope that this partnership with ASAP keeps ongoing. They really do, they do a great job with suicide prevention, they do a great job with vaping and with drugs, and a lot of the things that happen in Anderson County with the reduction in drugs and reduction in uses because of what ASAP does. So, we really appreciate their partnership with Anderson County Schools. Thank you.
And we're sure you'll let us know if there's other things we can do to help in addition to what we're already doing. Thank you all for being here. Next item is persons to be heard. Ms. Rathmell, are you here? All right. If you'll come to the podium. Just a reminder, because the topic is not on the agenda, we will not take any action on it, but if you'll state your name, address, address your comments to me, and you have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
My name is Kenish Rathmell, and I reside at 177 Brookfield Drive here in Clinton. My son is currently enrolled in pre-K and will be starting kindergarten in August. However, I do not know if he will be attending AC schools or if I will have to find a way of homeschooling him. School has been in session roughly 151 days, but my son has missed 63 of those days because he did not feel safe. He's constantly being bullied, being hit, pinched, bit, and spat on. I was not advised of this by the school, but rather of my child himself. I do not believe this was taken care of with the safety and the priority of my son. I was being lied to by his teacher, telling me that he had a great day. However, when he got in the car, he would tell me that his bully hurt him today. The people who I trusted to protect my child weren't protecting him. They were watching assault and battering being done to him over and over again and not even telling me. My son also attended the therapeutic preschool that helps with trauma. When leaving there one day, he asked me, "Mommy, why is it not okay for other kids to hit me at this school, but it's okay for other kids to hit me at my day school? Can you, this board, answer his question?" I reached out to a teacher, principal, and administration numerous times, but the situation was not fixed, and I had to step in and fight for my child's safety. I should not have had to have gone this far to speak to two of you, and I should not be having to stand here in front of the board tonight. There are numerous major problems with AC County Schools when it comes to bullying, and it starts with the bullying policy. AC Schools' bullying policy states students shall be provided a safe learning environment. It violates, it is a violation to intimidate, bully, harm, knowingly place a student in a reasonable fear of such, or create a hostile educational environment. However, all of this policy was violated against my son, and it took me to have this policy put in place. The consequences of bullying are broad and not specific to the actions. I do not know why your bullying policy is not effective, but something has got to change, and this board is where to start. I'm also not standing up here just for me as my child being bullied, but also as a voice for other parents who are currently or previously enrolled in Anderson County Schools whose child was bullied. I have spoken to numerous parents of bullied children who have unenrolled or are considering unenrolling their children from AC Schools because of bullying, and I have spoken to a child's mother who committed suicide due to bullying. I have come to the sense theme while speaking to these parents, AC Schools seem to protect the bully and deny protection of the victims of being bullied. I know all of this is a common pattern of school shootings, too. Most of them were bullied and adults who could have stopped it, set back, and did nothing. Do not let Anderson County be another statistic. You all need to figure out how to fix the problem before it costs more children's lives, and there's a mass unenrollment movement. We, the Anderson County parents, will not put up with this anymore. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I hope you all have listened.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming before us tonight. Next item is the approval of the agenda. We need to add to this under Action Items, approval of the budget. So, with that amendment, I hear a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion and second to approve the agenda with the addition of the approval of the budget under Action Items. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. Next item is approval of Consent Agenda, which includes the amendments from last meeting, Human Resources Report, Student Services Report, Field Trips, and Policies 1.106 Code of Ethics, 1.107 Conflict of Interest, and 2.702 Inventory on Second Reading. So, that'll be final approval for those. Anything need to be removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion?
Make a motion we approve the Consent Agenda, as presented.
Motion, second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. There was no executive approval this month. I have a couple of, well, the only comments I have. We just want to remind folks about graduations coming up, right? Do we know when those are? The Innovation Academy and CRCS is May the 11th, Clinton High School's May the 12th, and Anderson County High School is May 19th. So, make sure you have those on your calendar. Do want to make a comment about our workshop session. Our workshop got completely out of control last week, so, and we learned a lot. So, I would just remind you, if you have a topic you want to talk about, let's put it on an agenda so that we can talk about that, so we'll have some idea how long it might take. Also, I was going to, trying to schedule us to be evaluated tonight for our Board of Distinction Award that was not able to work out, but I have worked it out for next meeting. So, we'll have two visitors here from two other school boards watching us and evaluating us as part of our Board of Distinction. So, be on your best behavior. That's all I can say. So, we also have our Above and Beyond Awards. Everybody has those in front of you, and these are for our support staff since we're honoring them tonight. So, let's just do them in order. Glenda?
Okay. I have Tammy McCrery, bookkeeper at ACCTC, and I have Pam Faust, attendance secretary at Anderson County High School.
And I have David Massengill, who's an SRO at Andersonville Elementary, and Shawna McCoy is the secretary at Riceville Elementary.
And for Dale, Claxton Elementary, Kathy Forlins, which is an educational assistant of Clinton Middle School, Brittany Siler, who is also an SRO. From Clinch River, I have Kristy Kessling. Is that right? Kessling?
Kessling.
Kessling, secretary. And Dutch Valley Elementary, Julie Linert, who is a teaching assistant.
All right. Two I have are Fairview Elementary, Tina Arsinalt, who's the librarian and educational assistant from Grand Oaks. I don't know who Mark Whaley is, but I know who Hollywood is, who's the SRO there.
And I have from Lake City Elementary School, Chris Longmire, SRO, and from Lake City Middle School, Jenny Meredith, she is the secretary, and then Dr. Burrow from Norris Middle, Corey Blevins, and he's the SRO.
I have from Norwood Elementary, Amanda Essens, the school secretary, and Norwood Middle, Jada Jewett, bookkeeper. And I have Sarah Wells, nurse at the preschool, and I have Trish Howard at central office.
Chairman, we had our principals meeting this morning, and I gave all the certificates to the principals, so they will be getting the certificate plus the $25 that you all put in for U Trust. And just one comment, the partnership we have with our SROs and what they mean to our school system really shows up through this. When you have five of the 17 that are SROs that are part of our community, so it goes to show they are there for safety, but they're so much more than just somebody to be there for safety. They're so much more a part of our community.
Absolutely. All right. That is it from comments of the chair. Comments from our student board members?
Hello. At Anderson County, the EOC testing is April 20th, 25th, and 27th, and then dual enrollment classes ends April 26th. Seniors had their senior meeting about graduation the 3rd of this month, and then there is an ACT this Saturday. And then Youth Leadership had their graduation the 6th, which I was in. And then some fun stuff that's going on is prom is April 22nd at Hunter Valley Farm, and then the Special Olympics is April 18th. Talent Show is April 17th. And then for sports, our in-school softball game is April 18th against Fulton. Our soccer game at home is tomorrow versus Oneida. Tennis plays Fulton also at JC Park tonight. And then color guard auditions are April 24th, 25th, and 27th, and track plays April 21st. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. So, at Clinton High School, we started selling our prom tickets because our prom is a little bit later than theirs. It's May 6th, and it's going to be at the barn of Maple Creek, I think, and it's in Kingston. And then Clinton High School is performing at the Mosaic Festival, April 22nd at 1:30, and they're performing with the middle school and the, like, the garden is performing there. And then we had our tennis, we played tennis yesterday against, I'm trying to think if it was, I'm sorry, Powell, it was against Powell, and my brother actually plays tennis, and he won the, like, overall boys match for them, and like, also in doubles, too. And then the girls won overall as well. I think it was eight to six that they won. And then we have, that's gracious. So, the next ACT, like she said, is April 15th, and the Tennessee Promise, like, student deadline, they put it on here, it's July 5th, just to kind of remind them. And then we have a thing at our school, I don't, yeah, we have a thing at our school to where if you have an A or a B in your class, you get to skip your finals for that class. So, that's a pretty cool incentive that we have. And then another, just kind of senior thing is the senior breakfast is May 10th, and then we have graduation practice May 11th. And then we have the elementary little senior walk at 9:00 AM on May 12th before graduation, and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Getting real, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't like it.
Yeah, I was reading where the School Board Association, they have a Scope Conference. Scope is Student Congress on School Policy, so the Policies on Education.
It's a really cool.
It's great. Have you done it?
Yeah.
But one of the questions this year was, should boards have student representatives?
Oh, really?
Yeah, and 80% of students thought they should.
Our questions were, like, really basic when I went. They were just like the typical questions, like, should we have a dress code and stuff like that?
Yeah.
So, that's pretty cool that they changed the questions up.
It's good to know we're way ahead of most schools in the states.
Hey, Scott, ask a question on that. Do most boards have students to do this?
I don't think they do.
No, they don't.
No, most don't. So, like I say, we're way ahead of the game. All right. Next item is Director's Report.
Yeah, and I don't have very much, just want to say we are getting close on the EST project. They have almost all the brick done at Norris Elementary School. They are really, truly working on the inside. At Norris Middle School, they've got the road cut in there. If you get a chance to go by there and look at it, it is a real, really nice project. They've done a fantastic job on that. And again, I think I'm like a broken record, hopefully, we've got two more lights at the softball field to fix either tomorrow or first of next week, and then we'll be able, if that gets approved, we'll be able to go back to the chancellor and get those lawsuits throughout and be able to move forward with that. So, we know that's been a really, it's been a problem for a while, and it's dragged on too long, and we've just got to get that underway. And another thing, I can't say anymore about, our SROs, they've done a tremendous job of stepping up with safety and helping us and our principals and our administrators. They really and truly, we had that conversation this morning, how that we've just been keen on so many things that we want our students to be able to do and be safe, and our students do feel safe. When we go and do our focus meetings with them, that's one of the things overwhelming our students feel when they go to school, they feel safe. And I think that takes a village to do that. It takes everybody working together, and I think it's just like the tip line we have with ASAP. If there is a problem out there, we look at it and we do those things. And I think we do educate every student every day, and I think sometimes we forget about those things is that whoever comes in, we're going to do our best to educate them, and we do have, sometimes we have people with concerns, but I can tell you, our staff and our principals and everybody, they really and truly, they communicate with our parents, they communicate with our community, and do a fantastic job. Just on one special note, I'll end with that, is we had a parent meeting here about two months ago, and one of the things they talked about was communication, because a lot of parents don't communicate, you would think, with Facebook and things like that, because there is so much, there's a lot of junk on Facebook. So, we took that to heart, and we talked to our principals and said, "Hey, let's go back and start doing some things the old-fashioned way. We'll send out some emails, we'll send out Sky Alerts." And I got a real nice email last week, and the parents said, "Hey, thank you so much for doing that, the transparency, the help with that, it's really stepped up, and I want to thank you for taking us seriously." So, I think we do take parents seriously. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next item is a report from our workshop. For the first time in many, many years, there are no committee reports tonight, so we have moved to a workshop format. So, we did have a workshop Monday night. The only items that we voted on were the appropriations and transfers. We discussed those at length. So, I will entertain a motion at this point to approve appropriations 1A through 1C.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion, second to approve appropriations 1A, 1B, and 1C. Any discussion? Go over any of those, plan any of those. Okay. No, all in favor, oh, this is a roll call vote, sorry.
Mr. Bale? Mr. Gillamotters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
All right. And the other item is transfers 2A through 2O. Those were discussed at length as well, and I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
Second.
I need a motion. You make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the transfers 2A through 2O.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any discussion about any of those? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Anything else from the workshop that, or no other actions taken, so? No other motions to be made by anybody? Not will move into our action items. And let's just go ahead and take care of the budget first thing. So, you have the budget in front of you. This is, it is out of balance. We're still very early. We still don't know what our state money's going to be, so this is the best guess, and we trust Dr. Perrott and Julie to make great guesses, and they usually do a good job, so.
I was telling Mr. Gillamotters today, too, I met with our financial director, Robbie Holbrook, and with the mayor, and went over the budget with her, and told her things that we're having in the budget and what the board's priority was, that it's about compensation this year, and to make sure that we are competitive with districts around us. So, they were very appreciative of the budget and the conference that we had with them. Don't see a problem with them.
I may approve the budget for 23, 24.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the budget. Do you want to highlight anything in it?
Well, there is, I can, a compensation. There's a $1,000 step raise for all teachers. There is plus a 5% pay raise for all employees. There is, we've added six different steps to our classified people, because after 15 years, they didn't get any raises, so that was one of your all's priorities. We put that in there, and we've actually, too, added money to insurance. So, our people that have family coverage, they will get $1,400 more dollars to help pay that insurance. Our employee plus spouse, they will get $1,200 extra dollars to pay for that. Employee plus children will get $1,000, and an employee-only coverage will get $500. So, all of that amounts to about $4.8 million that we're going to spend on compensation next year.
All right. Any other discussion on the budget?
Just if our budget is not approved by the county commission, it will come back here for any changes.
Yes, it will come back. And I will bring it, once we get further numbers, we'll bring it back to you and update you on that and vote to move toward that. Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not all in favor of approving the budget? Say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. The next item is to approve the contract between Anderson County Schools and Side Effects for the Clinton High School Football Scoreboard, which we also discussed the other night. Is there a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, approve contract between Anderson County and Side Effects.
And it's a no-cost contract.
Right. This is, they will sell advertising on the scoreboard, which will help pay for it, and then other funding comes from other sources, so.
And our county attorney has.
Has signed off on it. Yep.
Right.
Approved it, yes.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. The next item.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we have Cafeteria Budget, too, that is separate. It is before you. Any comments on it?
No, it is Martin and Ryan do a good job with that, and it's straightforward, and it's outside of really all the thing of us, and they do a great job. They've got a fund balance of about $4 million, so.
How much?
About $4 million.
Is there a motion to approve the Cafeteria Budget?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. The next item is to approve the changing of our meeting date from June 8th to June 15.
Do we need a motion for that?
We do. We do.
Okay. I'll make that into a motion.
Second.
There's a motion second to move our June meeting from June the 8th to June the 15th.
And the reason for that is to finalize the budget?
Finalize the budget. They, they're going to have a budget meeting. They're looking at having a budget meeting on that 15th. And that way, if they, if they need it then, then if there's anything that we have to do before the 15th, and then the next Monday would be the final vote at county commission. So, that way, we've got it. We wouldn't have to have a special call meeting once they did that.
Don't we have, like, a change in May 2nd, from the 8th to the 9th or the...
That one was approved last month.
Yeah, we already approved that one, but I'll remind everybody of that one. But the motion on the floor is to move the June meetings a week so that we can accommodate the schedule across the street. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. That's done. The next, well, let me go ahead and remind you that our May meeting is, we will have our workshop on Monday, May the 8th, and then our board meeting will meet the very next night, Tuesday, May the 9th. That's to accommodate graduations.
And we're going to, we're going to ask you all to come on Monday night, okay? Because I know you all have stuff you need to do on Tuesday night, right?
So, Monday the 8th.
Do what?
Come here, right?
Yeah. Monday, Monday the 8th. And then you all have awards on Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Shall we meet Monday the 8th?
Yeah, same time.
ACHS has their awards ceremony that night.
Do what?
ACHS has their awards ceremony that night.
On Tuesday. Yes. And so does Clinton, I think, have theirs on the same night. Yeah. So, that way, we will have the last board meeting they're at, they'll be here for Monday.
Our workshop is on the 8th.
Yeah. Workshop Monday the 8th. And then the board on Tuesday the 9th. All right. The next item is approval of the Head Start budgets. All, all of Head Start budgets.
That's their COLA, Cost of Dating Adjustments, for the, our program and the delegate program and policy council. Their policy council has approved this. So, I make a motion we approve the Head Start COLA budgets.
I don't understand it. Joe does. I'll second that.
They did a great job of putting it all together.
Yes.
There's a motion second to approve that whole big blue blob there. So, is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. That is done. Any other business to come before the board tonight? If not, we'll be adjourned.
Corey, where are you going to college? Are you going, you're on the rush day for the past two years.
So, you and your mom and your dad?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, be careful with that. And I'll call you later. I'll call you.